And if you call the meeting, you order please, and if you'd help me with the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
And if you call a roll, please.
Will Elder?
Here.
Stacey Dawson?
Here.
Mark Higman?
Here.
Ryan Williams?
Here.
Zach Jeffrey?
Here.
Jennifer Madsen.
We do have a quorum. First of all, we have the approval of minutes. Entertaining motion? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Financial, twenty twenty-two, November? Do we have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We do have a second. We will call a roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Thank you. First, in general, we have a resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. And Doug, you're, is Doug here? If you'd just come out right up here, sir. Thank you. And if you'd read the resolution?
This is proposed resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing Mayflower Police Policy Update.
Now, I know that was a lot of material that I got to y'all.
It was a beast.
There was a lot of stuff in there. It took several, several weeks to compile, but I wanted y'all to know about that before we made any changes and just ask for your approval to go ahead and put that in.
I make a resi, I make a motion without residence twenty twenty-two dash four. I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. But do we have resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen? And Jimmy Joe? Jimmy's here? There you are. Can you come right here if they got any questions on him? Dump truck?
Not there where I am.
And if we get, one second?
Okay.
Dustin's gonna read.
It's the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Mayflower to lease or purchase one truck with dump bed for the street department.
Any questions for Jimmy?
Is this on next year's budget or this year's budget?
This year's. It was in there.
So the lease payment for the dump truck is budgeted in for twenty?
I need to ask Dale. Dale?
That's the one that we talked about.
Oh, leasing.
Yeah. And we were going to the council and expressed an interest in going with forty-six month lease. It is next year, but we went back to them and that's not even offered. So forty-eight month lease was the shortest lease time we could get. So that's what, I think his resolution shows both. But in, in the twenty twenty-three budget, which is I think the next time agenda maybe, we use the forty-eight month.
Okay, forty-eight month.
Next year's.
Thank you.
Sweet trip.
Sweet. I make a motion without residence twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. Mister Joe?
Do we have a motion? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? This being, what?
In the formal, in the formal resolution, do we need to go ahead and state the forty-eight months since?
Yes.
Okay. This being money, we'll call a roll.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Jimmy.
Sweet trip.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Hope you drive that careful. Twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, if you'd read it, please. Doug?
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash seventeen, a resolution approving and adopting for the city of Mayflower, Arkansas, the two thousand twenty-three budget, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein provided for and covering the twelve months beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to adopt the budget under resolution twenty dash, twenty twenty-two dash seventeen?
Would you have a motion to her say? Would we do have a second? This being what it is, we'll call roll. Any questions? Any questions to Dale?
Any questions?
I have one. If I said it out loud in the budget workshop, I gotta correct something. We did receive a water rate increase from community water system for next year. And it's about thirty cents per thousand gallons, which is about a nine point two percent increase. It's significant. But I did go ahead and put that in with the changes that you guys also wanted. I included that in there. It's not an option. And that, that automatically, I included it both in the cost of wholesale water and starting in February, I included that increase in the water revenue that we collect, because that's, that's per our last water rate increase. I believe any cost increases for wholesale water are automatically passed through to the water, Mayflower water customers. So that's a change we didn't discuss in the budget meeting that you need to be aware of. It's about a sixty thousand dollar impact on wholesale water prices for next year.
Any questions on that?
Yes. So the thirty cent increase for one thousand and the ten cent increase on, I mean, is this something that we, we have a resolution coming up on the very next subject here in reference to? Did you budget in us absorbing that cost, or did you budget with us passing that cost on to the consumer?
The water rate increase is passed on to the consumer. I wasn't aware of the ten cent increase in the, what's that called, CWA?
Yeah, it's not a rate. It's per meter.
It's per meter. So I recall the last time we had to do this, that we voted to absorb that ten cent meter, per meter increase, if anyone recalled that. To not pass that on, we, the city was going to throw that to not to avoid raising that rate to the consumer. Even it was ten cents. Still, ten cents, still whatever. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. That's all. Okay, thank you, Dale. Do you have a motion and a second on the floor? If not, any, yes. Yes.
I wanted to mention with Dale, that was not only an increase for Mayflower. That was everybody that, that the water system.
Community water.
Community water, or Conway, everybody else. It was not just isolating, I just wanted to mention that.
And I, I think that comes up on the next resolution as far as.
I believe it did.
This one's just the budget.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, we will, motion and second on the floor, we'll call a roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen?
I make a motion to table resolution twenty twenty-three dash.
We do have a motion to her second, to table.
I second.
We do have a second. We'll call a roll.
How much money will this generate?
Will it generate?
For?
Uh.
Increase.
This one that we're talking about right now is, is the community water increase on wholesale water.
We're talking about, I'm sorry. Beg your pardon.
You were in the middle.
Will Elder?
Anyway.
Yeah, this, this is on table in resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, the rate increase. Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
All right. And next we have is Dustin Chapman.
You were up, sir.
Uh, the fire dues is what, we're on number E. No, your E is different than mine.
How much?
I have a different one.
You have a different person.
I'm, I'm sorry, Gus. We did, we did it. We got it.
All right. All right. So we on, we're on E, the fire dues?
Okay, then I, let me get the right one here.
We can do either one.
Okay, increasing the fire dues, then. I guess it would be, I do not have a resolution in front of me.
There's not one.
There's not one, though.
Okay.
Yeah. So what we brought before y'all is a proposal to increase the fire due revenue for the fire district. Uh, what this will do is bring in more revenue, allow us to staff somebody at night for sixteen hours and somebody twenty-four hours a day on Saturday and Sunday, which we currently do not have. Uh, one of our highest missed call volumes currently is in the middle of the night. So with this increase, it will, uh, fix our issues on responding to calls at nighttime. Uh, Chief Matthews is gonna take it from here and talk to y'all over the numbers.
Good evening, City Council. So what I'm basically trying to do is bring our budget that hasn't seen an increase in over two decades, just adjust that for inflation from the past twenty years and bring it to today's buying power. So that, that's essentially, I'm not really necessarily asking for an increase. I'm just trying to get the buying power we had twenty years ago. Because our costs for delivering services, buying equipment, manpower, everything has grown exponentially. And second to that, our call volume has gone through the roof. We, twenty years ago, this fire department was probably turning around four or five hundred calls. Right now, we're on track to break twelve hundred. And to put all that on the backs of, of volunteer labor force with antiquated equipment, it's, it's sad. And I think we need to increase the revenue so we can get these members that are willing to volunteer their time, their resources and the tools and equipment to safely and effectively do their job. So that's the budget that's before you. I went through all fifty-seven hundred parcels in the fire district, validated every one of them, and it should be in your packet. Uh, there's a line by line for every single parcel in the district. It shows what the rate will be, where there's a new standardized proposed rate schedule. Prior to this, there was nothing standardized. You could open the rate file and people were getting charged one amount and there, there was no rhyme or reason to what people were getting charged. So now somebody can call you, they can call me, and I can tell them exactly why they're being charged what they'll be charged. So we've got standardization in place. We're adjusting for inflation.
I don't see anything in my, I'm missing something. It was in an email that was sent last week, I believe.
It looked, it looked like this if it was printed out.
It was a beast of an email. It took several minutes to download it.
That's seventy-two pages.
Yeah. It was emailed out to.
I'll be more than happy. I've got a paper copy if you'd like one.
But I'm trying to remember the, the amount of increase.
So total district revenue increase is gonna be about a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
No, per, per household, I mean.
Per household. So our residential assessment's gonna go from thirty-five up to sixty-five for your base increase. So we're asking for a thirty dollar increase on your residential and we're asking for a sixty dollar increase on commercial. And now we've also gone through and asked for some standardization on vacant lots. You got multifamily dwellings like apartments and condos and trailer parks that are gonna be assessed slightly different. But for the majority of the population in the district, we're asking for a thirty dollar increase residential and a sixty dollar increase on commercial rates.
So just for documentation and the public's sake, you're talking about a thirty dollar increase on their personal property taxes that they pay once a year?
Yeah. So I always try to draw a distinction on the taxes. This will be a separate fee from their taxes, because there is a state law. If you're over sixty-five, you can't increase their taxes. Now, we can increase fees. So the only thing that Faulkner County is doing is they are collecting those fees and remitting them back to us. So it, yes, currently it's thirty-five.
It's a fee that you pay for on your sales tax.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it's all collected with your personal property taxes and remitted to us, usually about three times over the course of the year, as checks are generally cut three times a year.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Legally, where are we at, Dustin? It needs to be something wrote up.
Well, on this, we, we checked with the municipal league. It, it did make me nervous enough to wanna check with them because that what the request is, is for, for this body to pass an assessment instead of, instead of the voters doing that. Um, and that's normally what you see is, is voters, um, either approving or rejecting any kind of increase in assessments like that. But municipal league did confirm that we, um, we do have authority to do that, um, because it be, in, we, we, that, Chris traced it back to two thousand and two, where it was put up for a vote that the city council would have, uh, authority to set the assessments. And they said, as long as it's open-ended like that, then you can modify it, you can raise it, reduce it. Um, so we do have that.
I guess I, my question still is, is there a resolution that has to be with this, or is legally has that?
We could draw one up. We did not do that because things happen so fast with this particular issue.
There's a timeline on this that we have?
There is a very finite amount of time left. Uh, we have to have all changes back to the Faulkner County Assessor's Office, I believe, by the fifth.
Of January?
Yes, sir. We do not.
That's what I was getting to.
Yes, sir.
They need to get it in front of the assessor, but.
They need to get it in front of the assessor.
Because they have to manually adjust all fifty-seven hundred of these parcels and get the mail, uh, situated on their end, uh, to get it out to all the residents.
I, I didn't get my questions resolved about it until mid-afternoon today, so certainly wasn't enough time to get it in your packet. So that, that's why you don't see a resolution.
What do we need?
Well, we can take a voice vote, uh, and see, see where we are tonight. If, if, if the, you know, if, if they're inclined to do it tonight, then we, we can do it tonight. Then I can work up a resolution that I think you can get to the assessor.
Okay, what is the, uh, city council?
I, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. He said that if we increase the fire dues, it would staff a person for how many hours?
So our, our goal right now is Ashton is here every day during business hours. I'm here three days a week during those business hours. So we feel we have enough staffing during the daytime to operate and administrate sufficiently. So what we're looking to do is bring somebody from three P M. to seven A M. overnight. So we're gonna, most of our missed calls, we're up to seventy-nine for the year out of almost twelve hundred, all occur overnight. Uh, this way, we're gonna guarantee we have a truck, we have rescue in or out, and volunteer members can need somebody else at the scene. So sixteen hours a day to answer your question, three P M. to seven A M. And that's gonna be about a hundred and six thousand, uh, of that total revenue that we're gonna generate. It's gonna go to offset that position. Uh, and that's including payroll taxes if I get back in. Uh, and to elaborate, that will not be a full-time position. We're gonna hire multiple part-time people, keep them under ninety-six hours, so they don't incur any overtime in a two-week period. So this is gonna be a straight hourly rate to minimize our costs. There'll be no benefits associated with this position. It's just gonna be a bare bones hourly rate, and that's how we're gonna staff with the revenue that we have available.
So are you planning to do this like seven days a week?
Yes, ma'am. So Monday through Friday will be three P M. to seven A M., and then we would have a twenty-four hour shift on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. Thirty, thirty dollar increase on residential, sixty on commercial. Did I get that correct? The other question I have is for, and, and this is just mine personally. I know my storage building, I believe I'm assessed fifty dollars for the additional storage building on my property, thirty-five on my house, fifteen on the storage building. So is, are those?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna assess like bars.
Shops, sheds, carports.
So any, any detached building is not an increase?
It has to be a livable, occupiable structure. That will be assessed the fee.
Okay.
And presently, just like you're going with a fifty dollar rate, I mean, there's no standardization in the file whatsoever. So I couldn't, I couldn't answer anybody's question last, hey, why am I getting charged this amount? I don't know. I honestly, I don't know why people are getting charged what they're charged right now, because there's, there's a hundred different amounts in the file. So this is gonna bring us standardized where we can easily tell you and explain why.
Chris, I've got a question. Not trying to muddy the water or complicate.
Yes, sir.
I just, I have a piece of property in the county that's, it's five acres that splits a section line, so it's on two separate parcels.
Yes, sir.
So I know I'll get assessed the, if we, if we might went through with this motion, sixty-five dollars on the livable structure parcel.
Yes, sir.
Will I then also be assessed another ten dollars on the other parcel?
So any vacant land, that's actually currently on the books, and it's only, I would say, with about a quarter of the parcels, it's been a forced, uh, a ten dollar minimum parcel charge. Whether you have an occupied structure or any kind of structure on that parcel, there should be a ten dollar fee levied. So in your case, you would hit sixty-five, where the majority of that house resides on that parcel, that would be assessed the sixty-five. The second parcel would incur the ten dollar charge.
So are you asking to also ring, to apply any additional rates to vacant land at all?
So.
Vain parcel?
So there is a, in this, in the rate schedule, it's in your packet, there would be a ten dollar minimum charge, and that's largely on the books already. And we're not asking to modify that in any way. It's going, unfortunately, there's almost seventeen hundred parcels that have not had that fee assessed on it, that will be ha, that will have that fee going forward.
You, you want thirty dollars for a primary resident, you want sixty dollars for business, you want ten dollars for a parcel?
Yeah. We're, actually, we just wanna enforce that ten dollars that's already in place and not increase it. It's already.
Do you need the city council to vote on that that's already in place?
No. I just, I just wanted to be as transparent as possible and put all the numbers out here so everybody can see what we're trying to do.
So to get a verbal vote on this and take the temperature on the council tonight, I'm gonna make a motion to raise fire fees in the Mayflower Fire District. Thirty dollars a year for primary residential structure and sixty dollars for business. That is for fire fees. That is my verbal motion to open it up to the council this time. Give me a second.
Please reinstate that motion.
Okay. Brian Williams made a motion to raise the fire dues in the Mayflower Fire District, thirty dollars per year for primary residences and structures, and sixty dollars on business.
I do have a motion. And also, a resolution would be wrote up.
It would be two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen. I'll write it probably tomorrow, and we'll circulate around email.
If, if we vote.
Yes.
If, if you vote for that.
And then we'll adopt it into the record in plenty of time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? We'll call a roll.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
All right, guys.
Thank you, council.
And I'll have council, love.
I will be very much looking forward to hearing about your plans for improvements with fire departments.
And we'll have, uh, council write up resolution.
Fantastic.
Thank you, guys.
We'll have a question. I'd like to suggest one thing.
Yes, sir.
That we not go, uh, ten or twenty years before we look at it again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's a big band-aid to rip off, chasing inflation for twenty years.
Yeah, now we'll talk about number F here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, chief.
And now we have Dustin Chapman.
Um, so number F is, um, a lawsuit that the city was served with, uh, on December first of this year. Uh, involved a police incident from long ago, two thousand nineteen, November of two thousand nineteen. Um, Chief Hunter was involved in it. Um, prior to him being chief, um, it's, it's a lawsuit from a, from a suspect. It was, it was a tasing incident. Um, flight, fleeing from the police, taser was used and, and now, now he's filed his own lawsuit. Doesn't even have an attorney. Uh, but I'm just bringing you an update on that. I can email the lawsuit to anyone that's interested in seeing it. I didn't, it's several pages, so we did not print it. Um, since then, we've contacted the municipal league. Uh, we're part of their defense program. Um, that's, that's the protocol for doing this. They are gonna take it. Um, and then we'll be in good shape with that. We've reached out to Chief Alcon, uh, and so he is, um, in touch with us and, and we'll follow all the protocol. And I'll, I'll help on the ground with them, but, uh, they will, they will take it, uh, as the trial defense. That's about all we know at this stage. It's still in the timeframe for response. Um, I, I did, uh, contact Mayor Holland and ask him to approve the, what we call it deductible for activating the municipal league defense fund. Uh, that's three thousand dollars. So we'd ask y'all to ratify that expense. Uh, but other than that, uh, we'll be, we'll be in good hands for them.
Any question for Dustin on that? Um, Dustin, while you're up, we got opening bids, prepares to the city center?
Yeah, no, no action. Well, actually, if they would, if they would approve that.
Oh, you need to approve that, okay.
Do we have to make a resolution for that three thousand dollar?
Not a resolution, just making you aware that that was, that's an expenditure that's, it's going out. If we can, you know, I think a lot of these things can just be, just a voice vote, and that's.
Okay. So we need a voice vote? Call a roll, please.
We, we need a motion.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I make a motion to absorb the three thousand dollar, uh, municipal league defense fund detainer. I don't, I.
We just need something in the minutes to, to show them that that's, that's been approved.
Okay. Motion, second?
I'll second.
Second. And call a roll, please. Get one.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Higman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
And Dustin, you used to have the opening bid.
This is the bids. Uh, we, we posted a newspaper ad, uh, requesting bids for, uh, improvements for the city center building. I don't recall the, the two dates, but it ran twice. It's supposed to run a week apart, and I think we did it at the end of November, the first of December. Uh, apparently, we've received one bid. This is from Faulkner Plumbing and Mechanical Incorporated. They had our, they, uh, someone from Faulkner here with us?
Faulkner Plumbing.
They were here at one point when we discussed this previous. So curious to see if this is the same bid that they talked about before. This is a bid bond, which is they're required to send, so that's good. It's dated today in the amount of their full bid, and it is, it's the exact same bid that they discussed as of August, August twenty-second, for one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. One hundred thirty-two thousand. Chief Hunter might can answer any questions about it. We're still not any further along than where we were before, except we had to do the protocol for requesting bids and receiving it now. So this is the same bid that we did expect. But a lot of this is just into the unknown of how, what kind of problem we're looking at and what, you know, if they can solve it part of the way, and then, you know, we might find a solution prior to suspending this. I'm not explaining that way. Well, we can, they can take action to approve this bid tonight. We can keep it under review, table it. You can take whatever action or no action.
In our two thousand twenty-three budget, I believe there was a line item for that, I believe, one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars that we are going on in that budget. So is there any action needed to go forward with awarding Faulkner Plumbing?
If you desire to go with this bid, then yes, but it's the only bid. You know, there's no rule that says you must go with this, but.
How many days does that bid bid for?
I don't know. The bid bond is, it's dated today.
So usually, if there's thirty to sixty days. I'm just saying, if it's something that we don't have to vote on tonight, and that would still good, the next meeting, I was going to make a motion to table, so we can, we need to discuss. We need that to discuss later.
Are you going to have Mr. Woodham present?
Correct.
That might be, that might be smart, too. If it's on here, I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, it's the same like it's two months ago, it'll be the same as yesterday.
It is, I mean, this, the estimate is dated August twenty-second, so.
I make a motion to table.
Would you have a motion? Do I hear a second? To table. Would you have a second? All in favor, I?
Aye.
All opposed, same thing?
It is word for word, the exact same estimate that he brought.
Barbara, you have an announcement for the swearing-in and also the presentation?
Yes, I believe the swearing-in ceremony is scheduled for January the first at ten A M. And I believe Justice Sam Strain is going to be here in this building at that time to swear in the mayor and all of the aldermen. They were all elected again.
Okay, presentation.
Okay, I believe Casey with Metro Plan has something.
Oh, I thought there was.
Oh, you want those?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Casey.
Can we do this just real quick?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Two of our aldermen are going to be leaving us, and this will be their last council meeting. So we have a couple of plaques. The first one is presented to Will Elder for outstanding service on the Mayflower City Council, January one, two thousand and one, to December thirty-one to two thousand and twenty-two.
All right. Oh, she's okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Will.
Well, it's been my pleasure to serve, and I appreciate it. This is the place, this town is where I've ended up, and it's where I want to live the rest of my life, and I'm hoping that y'all can carry on without me, which I'm sure you can do very well.
We want to thank you a lot, Will. We've been down the road a lot together. Well, I appreciate it. And so does the city council.
It's a long time to serve, Will, and we do appreciate it. The next one goes to Stacey Dawson for outstanding service on the Mayflower City Council, August the twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
I should. I'm going to dito what he said. I moved back home after being twenty-one years in Mississippi. I moved back home to Mayflower because this is where I want to finish my life, right here. And I made a choice to be a part of the city council, to help guide the city that I wanted to be a part of. And, you know, this doesn't mean that I may not step up in the future and try to step back in as a city council. At this point, I'm just trying to take care of elderly parents and things, and I can invest the time I need to dedicate to the city. And I don't want to do it unless I can do it right. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacey.
And let me say this. The Dawson name has well-served Mayflower because his dad was chairman of the planning commission for many years. So the Dawsons have certainly served Mayflower, and we appreciate you.
I'd like to say that your dad was my mentor, too. He taught me how to do this stuff, and I miss him and hope everything goes.
Don't thank your mother ever forgave me for talking your daddy into taking that over.
Okay, and then I guess we have Metro Plan?
We have Metro Plan and Casey.
Stacey is here tonight?
On behalf of Metro Plan, I wanted to say appreciation to Mayor Holland. He served on our board from two thousand six to two thousand twenty-two. He was our board president in two thousand fifteen, but most importantly, he was a supporter of Metro Plan. He was a supporter of staff, and he was a supporter of the region. So we would like to say thank you and congratulate you on retirement as well as our other members. So thank you, and we have a small token of appreciation.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, sir. Do you stand right there? I'll get a picture. All right. I can shave him, man. Sharp.
Well, this is another one that the mayor had given to him, and it says, "With our greatest appreciation, we honor Mayor Randy Holland of Mayflower, Arkansas. Thank you for your dedication throughout the years at Faulkner County Solid Waste District. Best wishes, and you will be missed, December two thousand twenty-two."
Solid waste. Hey, Danny, you're going to be busy. Metro Plan, Municipal League, there's a lot of stuff. This is my last hurrah, so I sure will miss you guys and hope everything goes real good with y'all. I really do. Hope Mayflower goes further. So I'm going to say my last deal. We have, they have a city council meeting January twenty-sixth, and planning commission is January the tenth, and I would entertain a motion. Oh, we'd have one, oh, sorry about that. We have one last main important thing that I forgot, about to forget about, thank you. Can I have you read that?
Been given, this is the mayor's impact award. Present to Barbara Mathis, for forty years of dedication and service to the city of Mayflower. Thank you for all that you did.
Well, you know, I'm happy to say that I'm not leaving, so, and I do appreciate this. I've enjoyed the forty years that I've had so far. It's been a pleasure being a public servant for the citizens of Mayflower.
And I have one thing to say about Barbara. Well, a lot of things to say about Barbara, but all the good things I'm going to say. We've been together sixteen years. I told her that it takes two of us to be one good mayor. And she's officially called the recorder. Now, I don't know if any of y'all know what that means, but the recorder also becomes the vice mayor when I am out of the city. And she's always been the vice mayor to me, and both of us together have tried hard to see the vision of this town, and you're the best.
Thank you, mayor.
That's all.
In forty more years, okay? Well, this was really unexpected, so. Thank you. Pardon? Any public comments?
Yeah, I didn't even have it down there.
I really want to tell you something, though, about your public comment. I throw a lot of heart to you here, though, because you really made an impact on my life, and I want you to know that. And I'll let you know back there, but I want to let you know in front of everyone how much you meant to me.
Thank you.
What you've done for me. And I got a question for Zach and Brian. Do y'all smell that?
What, long hairs?
Can you smell it? Do you smell it? It's baseball. Remember how we all started, didn't you? In two thousand and seven, his little girl joined our baseball team. That year, two thousand and seven, we went on and won the state championship. You remember that?
Yeah.
With his little girl on my baseball team. Not only in two thousand and seven, but in two thousand and eight, we won again. Two thousand and nine, we won again. Three years in a row, we won a state championship. When those kids got older, in the ninth grade in high school, we won another state championship. And it all started with Savannah on our team. Later on, over the two thousand and ten, eleven, we had Pee Wee Basketball, and his daughter was on my basketball team. His daughter and my daughter become really good friends. So, you know, around town here, I was always known as the yes-man for Mr. Randy Holland. Anything that Randy wanted to pass, I was the guy to say yes to. But what a lot of people didn't understand, you were my friend way before you become my mayor. All the stuff that we used to talk about there at the basketball games. We have a love for music together. We really enjoyed that. All of a sudden, you come to me one day and you said, you said, Eddie, I need your help. Will, if you don't mind, look at that and pass it around to the whole table here. And you asked me to be your code enforcement officer. You remember that? So when I was coaching these girls, coaching these boys in baseball, that was one of the ways that I was serving people. But when I become the code enforcement officer, I was underneath Carl Ceney. And my goodness, working with Carl was having my ups and downs, and I remember coming in your office that day, and I said, I tell you, I want Carl's job. I want to be the main guy. What do I need to be to be the head code enforcement officer? And you put a book in front of me this thick. You got to know all those codes right there. And I stepped back, and that's when I started opening my eyes what's going on in city hall about the people that work here. Carl Ceney, Raymond Arnold, Jimmy Joe Johnson, and Barbara and Matt. Really started opening my eyes what's going on in here, and it's because of you. So it's been an honor to be your fire extinguisher. When I hear things going on in the city, I'd always try to throw water on it, but out the fire. You know, become their code enforcement, to be appointed to be on the city council. And then get to serve with Brian and Barbara, with Mark, and with Will, Judy Maddley, she's not here, David Adcock. She started introducing me to go to the municipal league. There, I met Don Zimmerman, a great, great man for the state of Arkansas. We go to that conference, I don't know if you guys know this, but at the time, we had a grant to put in the infrastructure over here on Interstate Drive. And we couldn't get it to kind of pass through with the people that own the property out there. And we were going to lose that money. Do you remember how much that was?
One point five.
One point five million dollars. We was going to lose it. We go to the conference, and Randy looks at me and he says, listen, we got to get our hands on that money to do so. We can't let Mayflower lose this money. So I cornered Don Zimmerman. He goes to the governor, and we ask him to move that money right here in this building. So all the time, the two years that I started on the city council, that moment was so exhilarating for me, Randy, to do that, to go to the winter conference, meet Jason Raper, sit down with him and talk to him. You've introduced me to so many people in the network, people that I know that's made me a better person. When you asked me to get my hours in at the municipal league, to become an official municipal person, to do that, to meet all the people that I've met, and then to go through the C D I. training and all the people, my network of friends was just huge and how it grew. So from the bottom of my heart, man, what you've done for me, I want the whole world to know. I appreciate you more than you can think. I could count on one hand the men in my life that's impacted my life, one hand. And if you gentlemen have any other men in your life that's really somebody to invest in your life, there's not a better feeling other than maybe your family loving you. I passed around this right here, and I want y'all to look at something. There is one thing on this keychain that y'all should happen to notice. In two thousand seventeen, I rededicated my life for Christ. Wasn't long after that, I decided to get rebaptized, and that man was there. He was there to see me get baptized, okay, First Baptist Church. I go out to the forerunner's belief, and he handed me that penny. And I've had it ever since, and I take it everywhere I go. He also told me this. He said, Eddie, God first, family second, and everything else will fall into place. I never forgot that. So I don't have a fancy plaque or anything like that, but I'm going to present to you this simple thank you for the baseball.
Thank you, Eddie.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Eddie. Priorities in your life is the thing. Like you said, keep God first, your family, and then your friends, true friends. That's it. And I appreciate everything, and all of y'all, all gone, I'm going to miss you, like I said, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.